The City of Littleton City Council Hybrid Regular Meeting for Tuesday, April 6, 2021. The time now is 6:30 or 18:30. City Clerk, roll call please.
Mayor Valdez.
Present.
Mayor Protem Malin.
Here.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Here.
Councilmember Elrod. Councilmember Fay.
Here.
Councilmember Grove.
Here.
Councilmember Milliman.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great, thank you very much. Samma Fox Assistant to the City Manager, if you could please tell us how this meeting will proceed.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, staff, citizens, and guests. I'm Samma Fox Assistant to the City Manager, and I'll be serving as the moderator for this evening's hybrid council meeting. We are streaming this meeting on cable channel 8, Facebook, and on our website at littletongov.org. Please be aware, comments left on Facebook Live will not be moderated and will not be included in the meeting minutes. Those wishing to participate in any public comment portion of the meeting are advised to view the meeting at www.littleton.gov or under My Littleton, Littleton 8 TV, as this broadcast has the least amount of delay. The agenda will be handled by Mayor Valdez in the same way it would be handled for a regular in-person meeting. As always, citizen participation is encouraged during public comments and public hearings. To participate via phone, please call 669-900-6833. And when prompted, enter the webinar ID 976-6468-3222. There will be two opportunities for citizen participation this evening, once during public comments and again during ordinances on second reading and public hearing. If you wish to speak during either of these opportunities, please call in early and stay on the line. Again, the number is 669-900-6833, and use webinar ID 976-6468-3222. When public comment is announced, press *9 to raise your hand to be recognized as a speaker. Microphones will be muted for all citizens calling in. Speakers will have three minutes to address council, and the city clerk will announce when you have 30 seconds remaining, and again when your time is up. For agenda items, Mayor Valdez will ask for a motion and a second, followed by discussion and a vote. Council will vote on agenda items using a thumbs up for a yes vote and a thumbs down for a no vote. The clerk will call each vote with all ayes and nays. Again, if you plan on participating during public comment, please call 669-900-6833. And when prompted, enter the webinar ID 976-6468-3222. Please stay on the line and press *9 to raise your hand to speak. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Samma. Please rise and join me on the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Okay, council, you have had a chance to see the agenda. Do we have any changes? If not, agenda is approved. All right, and we'll go down to our reports. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. I just have one update I wanted to share with council and the community here. It has to do with an issue that's popped up on social media here in town lately, and it has to do with street racing. And I've raised this here before with council here, maybe a couple of months ago. It has been a topic here certainly in the Denver metro area. You're probably aware, this was, in fact, there was an article in the Denver Post not too long ago. Or these informal groups use social media to try to gather at the last minute and actually cordon off sections of cities in order to have a drag race, in essence. And in fact, the Denver Post article had to do with closing off of 225. And so these groups have gotten pretty brazen about their attempts here to close off portions of interstates or portions of cities. As you know, I also have an opportunity to meet with the South Metro city managers here periodically, and this has been a topic a couple of times. So the reason why I'm raising this is because it's gotten the attention here just in our local social media. There is a task force here that is comprised of the sheriff's office, local police stations, police departments, State Patrol, and just about everybody here in the metro area participates, including the City of Littleton. This task force is, the intent here is to try to use, you know, our technology to try to find where these groups are trying to aggregate at the very last minute. It's very difficult. You know, they're fairly savvy about how they approach all this. And I suppose one thing to report is we haven't had an official incident here at the City of Littleton with this group. It's not to say we don't have drag racing, but it's least this particular group here and how they've kind of formed and taken opportunities in multiple cities. We don't have that issue here yet. We're keenly aware of it. Our police department, again, we're tied into the task force. There is, one of our analysts in the police department is actually part of that group. And so we do have data that we use almost daily in trying to make sure that we kind of stay on top of this. So again, the reason I'm sharing this with you is that we are keenly aware of the issue, and we do participate in a task force and we look for those opportunities, but as of yet, we haven't had an official kind of a speed racing event here. One last comment is that we tend to see every once in a while where it looks like people have aggregated inside parking lots of kind of some of our larger shopping center areas. Again, it's not necessarily officially one of these, but we do see where people tend to want to aggregate and have these kind of speed racing events. We're doing our best to kind of stay on top of that. So that's my report, council, unless there's any questions about that topic.
Seeing none. All right, thank you. Thank you, City Attorney.
No report, Mayor, thank you.
Great, thank you. We will start with Councilmember Milliman.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, everybody. Just a couple of things to note tonight. One is, I want to recognize Mark Ralph this evening. I don't know if you guys are aware, or if everybody's aware, but he was nominated for the 2020 City Manager of the Year Award. And I don't agree with the voting committee's decision, but he came, he got honorable mention. I believe it was Eagle County City Manager, or Eagles City, the City of Eagle won, but of course, we don't agree with that. So in our eyes, we think you're the Manager of the Year Award. So congratulations to you. We're so proud of you, and we're so honored that you're, that you're our city manager. We really are blessed and very lucky. Yes. Even though Reed might not agree with that, Stephen.
Well, if I may, let me just take an opportunity here just to comment on that. You know, first of all, the staff surprised me. I had no idea. They submitted my name, which is humbling in just in that regard. I think it's a lot, quite honestly, a larger testament to this organization. It's not just me, but it's also the staff and clearly the council. When all of us align on a single purpose, great things happen. So thank you for the comments, but it's actually a team effort.
The second thing I wanted to note is, I don't know if you're all aware too, this was in the Littleton report. We have a police officer who just retired after a 22-year service on Littleton Police Department. His name is, and I'm not going to get his name right, it's Stephen Keely Holokai? No, Kilo is what he goes by. I'll go with that. So Officer Kilo, if you are not aware, he served on the SWAT team for 10 years and was a member of the traffic team that utilized motorcycles for traffic enforcement. I want to wish Officer Kilo the best to both he and his family. I understand they're retiring in lovely Southern California, much well-deserved retirement, so. And then the last little bit, the last thing I wanted to share was, you know, we had another horrific shooting in Boulder, Colorado, a week and a half or so ago. I can't even say thoughts and prayers. I don't even know what to say. It's heartbreaking, it's disturbing, and it's just ongoing. And I, I just want to put out there that my heart is with the city of Boulder and all of the families and employees and the police department that were affected by that. So that's it.
We'll go Councilmember Grove, then Fay.
Good evening, everyone. We had our first next-gen meeting for the new board and spent a lot of time bringing the new members up to speed. We had about, if I remember correctly, six returning members. And of the officers, we have one new member that is going to take an officer, a leadership role, and then the rest are returning members, which is really good in terms of building our future leadership. And they are going to get together and then come up with a recommended list for council and for staff, and then hearing from staff and some ideas. They had some things that they want to work on. Maybe the potential for our financial problems and how to solve that was one thing they're working on. Another thing, I was hoping that maybe they could brainstorm some ideas on our parks that are being loved to death, and if they can come up with some ideas for us, might be kind of fun. So those are a couple of things that they are going to work on. And that's it.
Great, thank you very much. Councilmember Fay, then Driscoll.
The number of our previous council meetings and study sessions, we've struggled over what is affordable housing? What does affordable mean to us all? And I commented, we seem to be all over the place. So I looked up what area median income is for our area. This has already been defined, it's already used, so it's not like this is a mystery or anything that we have to figure out a formula for. The numbers are quite stunning. For a person, this is, this is an actual measure on a chart. These are all for single persons. To be 30% AMI, which we toss around as kind of just a measurement, $21,000 a year would be that person's annual income. 80% AMI is 54, almost $55,000. And 100%, so that is very immediate income, $70,000. So those are the numbers that are standards that we could choose to work from. They've already been established. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Drisco.
Yes, thank you. A reminder, we are going to have our first Zoom meeting tomorrow for Hoodlum Downtown Merchants Association at 8 o'clock. Everybody's welcome. Just go to Hoodlum's website. I fortunately don't know what that is, but I think if you just Googled historic downtown, or merchants downtown, excuse me, you would find that website. So it's 8 o'clock. It'll be about 40-minute presentation, or 40-minute meeting. And then just letting everybody know that we're going to be ramping up Weekends on Main again. Is that what we're still calling it, or we're calling it some, okay, same thing, Weekends on Main, starting the weekend of May 7th. So I hope to see everybody down there. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Elrod.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make everyone aware, the annual Eye of the Camera exhibit that is hosted and presented by the Littleton Fine Arts Board is going on right now. It runs through April 24th, so do go check it out in the museum. It is open and very accessible now. And it's also, the exhibit's also available online, so for those that can't make it to the museum, do check out the digital exhibit there. And just want to provide a little plug to some of the winners. Best of Show with Sherri Wiggins, first place Matty Cox, second place Catherine Charles. So congratulations to the winners of Best of Show, and do go check it out. It's pretty, pretty cool. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. All right, Mayor Protem.
No report, Mayor, thanks.
All right, I just have one item. Council, be sure to check the tentative schedule. We have added on there the meet, greet, and eats again. So that'll start on, one of them will be June 30 at Stern Park. Then we have July 14 at Ryder's Vista, and August 11 at Kettering Park. And those are always well-attended events. So we didn't get an opportunity to do that last year, so we'll do it again this year. So I'm looking forward to that. All right, moving on to item number five, the citizens' appearance, of which we have none tonight. So we'll go to public comments. The time now is 6:44. Samma Fox, if you would, if you could please inform the audience how they can participate.
Of course. If you wish to address city council, please call 669-900-6833. When prompted, enter the webinar ID 976-6468-3222. Press *9 to raise your hand and be recognized as a speaker. Citizen microphones will be automatically muted until a citizen is called upon to speak by the last three digits of their phone number. When called on to speak, please state your name and district or address clearly for the record. Public comment is an opportunity to express opinions or ask questions regarding issues that are not part of public hearings on tonight's agenda. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. The city clerk will notify you when you have 30 seconds remaining, and again when your time is up. The city council is not authorized under the Colorado Open Meetings Law to discuss, comment, or take action at this meeting on any issue raised by public comment that is not part of tonight's agenda. The mayor may refer the matter to the city manager and/or city attorney for immediate comment after public comment, or to staff to obtain additional information and report back to council as appropriate. We expect comments to be civil. Disrespectful or disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. We currently have one caller in the queue, caller 819. You have been unmuted. You may begin speaking.
Good evening, City Council. Okay. Good evening, City Council. This is Pam Chadborn. I live in Block 9 from City Center in District 1. A couple of comments, and first I'll just want to make a comment about speeding vehicles. I live close to Santa Fe Drive, and I'm pretty sure that people for a mile both directions can hear speeding vehicles on Santa Fe in the afternoons and nights. I'm going to comment that I believe that there was a change in Colorado law, maybe, I don't know, 10, 15 years ago, to allow vehicles that have been modified for racetracks and that have, you know, fewer noise suppression devices on them to be street legal. In the past, city council has written letters to the state legislature about certain issues. And I would encourage city council to ask staff to prepare such a letter to the Colorado Legislature to restore restrictions on vehicles, to say that modifications for racing are not legal on the street. There are details to that that I'm going to leave up to staff and people who know about it. I'm just going to say that would increase the quality of life for many, many, many people in the whole Denver metro area and probably make us all safer as well. I'm going to say also that this applies to both motorcycles and cars. It's quite obvious that some of the vehicles are motorcycles. So please consider writing a letter to the legislature about this, and if there is a group of law enforcement folks who are doing this, let's get information from them too, and their endorsement. My second comment is about the amount of items on the agenda tonight and the lack of public information about them, especially very large, items of large significance, which are only appearing in a two-week process of a first reading and a public hearing. There are a lot of items on tonight's agenda. Some of them are first readings for, you know, a public hearing in two weeks, and they're very significant, yet. The insert issues, vesting property rights, changing the zoning map, the metro district revenue sharing. There hasn't been a recent study session about this, and I'm going to say to explain it to the public. You, city council, do have business to do, but it is our business, and what we learn, what is presented should be presented for us and our understanding of these issues. Thanks very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Pam. Samma, do we have any other callers?
No, Mayor, that was our last caller with a hand raised.
All right, it is 6:49. I'll close the public comment. City Manager, City Attorney?
Yeah, to, to address a couple of the comments that Ms. Chadborn raised, so as it relates to the speeding vehicles and sound of vehicles, the state of Colorado does have a state law that makes it unlawful to modify your muffler system if it's designed to increase the sound. So our police department does have the ability to issue summonses when they come across a vehicle where they've obviously made modifications designed to do that. As it relates to the size of the, the council packet tonight, I can certainly lament with Ms. Chadborn. It was a lot to get through for staff. As it relates to some of the issues related to the insert property, that is a, an applicant has filed a request to modify their PD, their, their planned development. So this is an applicant who has brought this forward. It is a quasi-judicial hearing, so we do not have study sessions. We've, we've tried to put as much information as we can out front, as far as we can, but this is the applicant's right. So on April 20th, we will be having a public hearing to discuss a lot of the provisions related to that insert property parcel. But that's the best that we can do in a quasi-judicial setting at this point. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, so let's go down to our consent agenda. Samma Fox, if you would, please.
Consent agenda items may be adopted by a simple motion. All ordinances must be read by title prior to a vote on the motion. Any consent agenda item may be removed at the request of a council member. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Malin, if you would please introduce.
Thanks, Mayor. Resolution 082021, confirming the appointment of Deputy Presiding Judge Loretta Huflein, Judge Benjamin Courier, Judge Stephen Katzman, Judge Christopher Cross, and Judge Vincent Attencio as municipal court associate judges for a two-year term and providing a compensation adjustment of 3%. Ordinance 042021, an ordinance on first reading approving the Second Amendment to the Santa Fe Park Plan Development Plan, or River Park, and amending the official zoning map accordingly. Ordinance 052021, an ordinance on first reading approving a development agreement by and between the City of Littleton and Evergreen Mineral and Santa Fe LLC pertaining to vested property rights together with the referenced vesting plan for Santa Fe Park or River Park. Ordinance 092021, an ordinance on first reading approving an intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of Littleton and the River Park Metropolitan District establishing a revenue sharing agreement. Resolution 182021, authorizing an application by the city for funding from the Arapahoe County Open Spaces Grant Program for a grant for the development of a water resources master plan. Resolution 192021, authorizing an application by the city for funding from the Arapahoe County Open Spaces Grant Program for a planning grant for Kettering Lake Water Filling Design. Resolution 202021, authorizing an application by the city for funding from the Arapahoe County Open Spaces Grant Program for a planning grant for a trail connectivity analysis plan. Resolution 162021, approving the release of 2021 budget provisos for open space fund projects and public opinion polling and education. Resolution 142021, approving the appointment of three new board members to the Aspen Grove Business Improvement District. ID number 20038, motion to approve appointment to vacancy on the Historical Preservation Board. And last, ID number 21065, motion to approve the March 16, 2021 Hybrid Regular Meeting Minutes.
Well done, thank you. Council, I'm looking for a motion.
Still moved?
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, and that was Councilmember Grove on the second. Okay, so council, we are voting on items. What is it? A through K. A yes vote, thumbs up would be to approve, and a thumbs down to deny. Ready, vote?
The vote is seven in favor of the motion carried unanimously.
Thank you for reading all those. All right, we'll go down to, we have no general business tonight. We'll go down to item number nine. Samma Fox, if you could please inform our audience how they can participate.
Thank you. Citizens wishing to speak during the public hearing tonight should please call 669-900-6833. And when prompted, enter the webinar ID 976-6468-3222. Press *9 to raise your hand and be recognized. There will be one staff presentation and public hearing for all three ordinances tonight. After the staff presentation, you will be recognized by the last three digits of your phone number. Speakers will have three minutes to address council on the topic, on the public hearing topic. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And as she just said, that we, I will read all three ordinances back to back. We'll have one presentation, but then we'll have three separate votes on, on each item. All right, so first, we have ordinance 062021, an ordinance on second reading amending ordinance number 36 series of 2020, known as the Annual Appropriations Bill. We have ordinance 07-2021, an ordinance on second reading amending the 2021 Littleton Sewer Utility Enterprise Budget. And our third item is ordinance 082021, an ordinance on second reading amending the 2021 Littleton Stormwater and Flood Management Utility Enterprise Budget. And City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. I'm actually going to turn this quickly over to our Finance Director, Tiffany Hooton. This is the time of year when we look to carry over, as we call, some of the projects from the previous year.
Is your microphone on? Good evening, council. I am Tiffany Hooton, Finance Director, and we have three ordinances before you this evening related to three different types of budgets. The policy question we have before you is, does council, does city council support amendments to the following appropriation and budgets for the carryover of 2020 encumbered funds, as well as personnel changes and funding for community research and engagement? The three ordinances that you have before you, one is amending what I consider the annual appropriation, and that is specifically related to general funds. The 2021 Littleton Sewer Utility Enterprise Budget is adopted separately, so we have a separate amendment for that as well. And then also the 2021 Littleton Stormwater and Flood Management Utility Enterprise Budget, which has a separate budget that's adopted as well. A little bit of background about encumbrances. So usually about the first quarter of every year, we come to council and we ask that you formally appropriate any funds that were either encumbered with a purchase order, so a contract has been put in place, the project is underway, or there's additional projects that weren't able to be addressed or funded or started in the previous year, and we like to formally appropriate those as well. These are typically things like purchases of vehicles that we might not have gotten in 2020 that we didn't receive until 2021. It could be a construction project that just isn't completed in 2021, or 2020, so we have to carry it into the next to carry it into the next year. So there's a number of those each year that we bring back to council. I will kind of mention that the, the amount and the dollar amount of the encumbrances that we are carrying over for 2021, sorry, the encumbrances, the amounts that we're carrying over for the 2021 encumbrances is significantly higher than in previous years, and I think that's just kind of a testament to a lot of the projects that we weren't able to complete due to COVID. We had to reallocate resources internally, so a lot of things weren't able to be completed. We do have a couple of additional budget amendments. One is related to personnel changes. We have two of those. One is converting a vacant mediation coordinator position to an economic development manager. This is kind of in line with the early retirement incentive program that we offered last year. We just have an internal need for this position, and so we're asking for funding for that. And then the other one is to convert a part-time business support specialist in the library and the museum area from a .5 FTE to a 1.0 FTE. The additional appropriation that's noted in your communication is earlier, you approved by consent the release of the budget proviso related to community engagement, and unfortunately that amount is a higher amount than we anticipated, and so the, the budget proviso released the $50,000, and we're asking for an additional $125,000 related to this project. Some staff analysis, so I mentioned earlier that this is a pretty significant amount compared to prior years. We have a couple of large items that are here that we haven't had in the past, specifically related to grants. You know, we received the federal grant funding related to Platte Canyon and Bowls, and Platte Canyon and mineral intersections, and unfortunately, those grants are still underway. We haven't started those projects, and so we're going to carry over the funding related to those grants. A couple of the other ones related to capital projects, and 2020 is the first year that we implemented the 3.1 transfer from the general fund to the capital projects fund. And again, with limited staff and resources, we just weren't able to get to all of those projects and spend that full 3.1 in 2020, and so we're asking and requesting that that full amount that was remaining be carried into 2021, so we can continue with those projects. The fiscal impact of all of this to our total budget is 10.5 million roughly. This is about a 10% increase in total. The general fund was about $2 million, and I mentioned the grants at about $3 million, and capital projects is about 3.1 million. We have accounted for this in our five-year plan, and we anticipated some projects not being completed, and so we allowed for that in our estimates, and so there is adequate fund balance for these amendments. Staff does recommend moving forward with the ordinances on second reading and amending these three budget items. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Great. Do we have any questions? We do, Councilmember Elrod.
Thank you, Tiffany. So there's one item here that I want to bring to the council's attention and to staff's attention. The 1.3 million for the city center remodeling, so that was a decision that was made in 2019, and now we're going into a two-year delay on that project. Not only that it's two years later, but a very different environment than we had envisioned or planned for potentially two years ago. So while I understand, you know, we've already begun some work here, I do think it is prudent for us to revisit where we are on that project, what is left to do, and what, if any, modifications should be considered, either from a funding perspective, or from a design, or how, how the city is re-envisioning this city center, considering how we are working differently, and where some of those modifications and investments may need to go, technology, for example. So I don't know what that process is, but I do ask that we re-look at where we are on that project and how we plan or should plan on moving forward.
Any other questions? Great, all right. Samma Fox, if you would please remind our callers how they can participate.
Yes, just a reminder for any callers who'd like to participate to please call 976-6468-3222. Press, use the webinar, I'm sorry, please call 669-900-6833. Use webinar ID 976-6468-3222. And please press *9 now, or as soon as you get in, if you'd like to be recognized to speak.
All righty. I'm going to open up the public comments or public hearing. It is 7:03. Samma, do we have any callers?
Thank you, Mayor. We have one caller with their hand raised, caller 819. You have been unmuted and may begin speaking.
Hello again, counsel. This is Pam Chadbourne. I live a block and a half from the city center. Actually, I think Councilmember Elrod's suggestion is good, although I'm going to say that I don't think we should think that we're working differently because of COVID right now. I don't think that a reduction of office space, for example, is called for. I think there are many jobs that inherently require face-to-face discussion and dialogue, and that happens naturally in an office environment where everybody is close together. It is hugely important in collaborative enterprises like a city government, and I'd say, public-facing enterprises as well. So, no, I, I, I am not sure that looking at the city center redesign with an eye toward, oh, we're going to change the way we work now because of COVID, I don't think that's the reason. I do think the reason is, of course, that there's a ton of construction now, and construction costs a lot of money now, and doing construction now isn't smart because of this surplus that we're paying for the large labor market and material competition that's going on now. So that would be the reason that I think we should consider, or look at, the city center construction project, and maybe all the construction projects from that point of view. Is this the right time to conduct them? If we wait, and yes, there is inflation over time, but would we get rid of this premium that we're under right now for the competition and labor and materials? I also wanted to talk about the mediation coordinator, and I'm going to say that I thought that office had some usefulness. I do think it matters a lot who's doing it, and that they have no either appearance or actual bias, and so I'm surprised to see the concept proposed that there should be an economic development manager. We already have a community development department that is not doing community development, it's doing, how can we serve developers? So we don't, I, I, and we have an economic development department. We don't need this position, and I'm really offended to see it there.
30 seconds.
So please reconsider that. Also, a business support specialist on top of the economic development personnel we have, I, I'm not seeing that product, that department being, either department being managed the way I, I think that they could best serve the people. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Samma, do we have any other callers?
No, Mayor. That was our last caller with the hand raised to be recognized.
Thank you. I will close the public hearing at 7:06. Counsel, any questions, comments? If not, looking for a motion.
Can we maybe hear from the city manager in response to Councilmember Elrod's question?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I may. Just a, a comment on Councilmember Elrod's suggestion. Actually, I would welcome the opportunity to come back to council and give you an update on where we are at with the city hall remodel here, Littleton Center. Lot has changed here in this past year, and as counsel is well aware, we had embarked here back in 2019, a remodel to create space here, and we were obviously having some real significant issues here. Along comes COVID, and not only do we have kind of a lessons learned here about how we work remotely and the opportunities, but also on how we would collaborate later as we come back together. So the question is, is how do you create space that facilitates actual collaboration? It's not to say we weren't doing it in the past, but I think we've learned some interesting lessons about that. There's all sorts of articles across this country about this exact same topic, so we're not alone. I think local government and business have learned a lot about how we work and how we collaborate. We've done the same. We've got some lessons that we've learned from this. We're kind of gathering that now. In fact, I was planning on making a few comments here next week during our budget update, and so my suggestion would be, is I can come back here at some point in the future and share with you kind of where are we at with the remodel of this particular facility. We also started 2020 with a CARES Act, and as the council is well aware, we redirected our contractor to build this room with CARE funding, CARES Act funding. So we kind of set aside the remodel. Well, in some ways, that might have been to our advantage, as we kind of learned a few things. Now, we've executed a contract. The appropriation is to take in the money forward here, so we have the full authority to spend within the budget as required by state law. The question then becomes, if counsel is interested, is that we can have a discussion about where are we at with a contract, and trying to decide, do we want to somehow learn a few lessons and change our approach in the end? And so that contract can, can be modified. In fact, we have kind of a design-build contract to begin with here, so it's not a traditional hard build, and we've talked about this before in the past. Hard, hard-bid construction projects of this magnitude are seldom to the advantage of any city, just because of the nuances you run into with a remodel. And so we typically take a design-build, or a CMGC, is another approach to that, as a way for us to control the costs and control the overhead and profit to a contractor. And so, in our opinion, right now is a perfect time for us to work with Saunders Construction to figure out exactly how we maximize the opportunity with space. So next week, I would be better prepared to come back to you and share with you kind of the date for which I can pull all this together, and then have a discussion about what have we learned? So those are my comments, counsel.
All right, thank you. Counsel, any other questions on all three? If not, I'm looking for a motion for ordinance number 06-2021.
Yes, Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 06-2021, 07-2021, and 08-2021.
Okay, we're going to take them one at a time here, if we could, please.
06-2021.
So you got 2021?
Second.
All right, that was Councilmember Millman on the second. Okay, counsel, if you're ready for a vote, thumbs up is to approve, thumbs down to deny. Ready, vote.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. We're moving down to ordinance number 07-2021. Looking for a motion?
Yep. I move to approve ordinance 07-2021.
Great, thank you, second.
Second.
Deja vu. All right, cool. We have Councilmember Millman on the second. All right, same thing, thumbs up for approval, thumbs down, deny, vote.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Looking for a motion for ordinance number 08-2021.
Yep, and I move to approve ordinance 08-2021.
Second.
Councilmember Millman is our second. All righty, ready for a vote? Thumbs up to approve, thumbs down to deny, vote.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
All righty, thank you, counsel. Do we have anything else from city manager, city attorney? If not, counsel, our next meeting is next Tuesday, 6:30. It's a study session. Time now is 7:11, and we are adjourned.